I appreciate everybody coming out this morning. It's good to see you. It's not quite spring yet, maybe it'll eventually get here. I appreciate your taking time on a Saturday morning to come out and join with us to talk about the FY14 budget. I did present a budget recommendation to the city council on Monday night, and we will now spend the next two months up to April 22nd as the council listens very carefully to the public and goes through all of our departmental budgets and our challenges for the coming year before it adopts a budget, which really is our plan, our financial plan, our operating plan, and our capital plan for the coming year. Before we get started, if I could just make a couple of introductions. We've got Mayor Baruch here. We have Councilmember Dave Snyder, Vice Mayor, and Councilmember Phil Duncan.
Hello.
Do we have any other council members? And Ira Kaelin is in the back. I'm going to go through some slides on the general government side, and then I will turn it over to Bill Hicks to present on our stormwater utility. But I also want to introduce Susan Carney, our Chairman of our School Board, and she will present slides on the school budget. And I'm joined by Tony Jones, our Superintendent, who put together the budget recommendations for the school board, which the school board acted on in early March. Again, thank you all for coming out this morning. We've got a number of slides to go through, and I'm going to try to go through them efficiently. There's a lot of information that we do try to communicate at budget time, but also a key point of this exercise is to listen and hear what you have to say in response to some of the budget challenges that we do have. So we don't want to take up all the time this morning on slides. We want to go through them as efficiently as we can and then listen to your questions and comments. We're budgeted to go until 12 o'clock, speaking of budget, so that's our time budget. And so let's get started. First, I'll just give a good budget overview, and then Bill Hicks, as I mentioned, will speak to the stormwater improvements, and then Chairman Carney will go through the school budget. One of the challenges in budgeting every year is to meet our needs in an effective way and in a cost-effective way, and to do so in a way that's affordable for the taxpayers of the city. We do have challenges on this front, and the main theme of the budget is trying to take care of mandatory costs, capital costs, at a time where the economy is not growing fast enough to pay for those improvements directly through economic growth. The budget that I presented to the council on Monday night has built into it a six-cent increase in the tax rate. I'm recommending that the council adopt on first reading and advertise a higher tax rate to provide flexibility. And there's a couple of key areas where flexibility, I believe, is required. We have a lot of unmet needs in this budget. We also have, just as an example, our TV station, which is filming today's event, is not in the school budget, and we're working with the schools right now to find out what's the best home financially for the administration of our TV channel, whether it should be in the school budget or whether it should be in the general government budget. And until that's resolved, that's not in the budget, just as one example of the unmet needs. The stormwater utility, we are proposing in this budget to very dramatically increase our level of service in the area of stormwater, to try to address mandatory EPA requirements to clean up the Chesapeake Bay, but also to address localized flooding that we've experienced in the city, and to try to maintain, repair, and replace what is aging infrastructure in the stormwater area. So on the revenue side, you all have all received your assessment notices in the mail. Overall, our increases in assessed value for real estate is about 2.9%, with the average for single-family homes at 3.5%, and the commercial sector a growth of about 1.6%. I started with assessed value because real estate taxes are a very significant component of our overall budget picture. That's 60% of our revenues. The other revenues we get, personal property taxes, this is the car tax, that's 6%. Our meals and utility taxes are 9%. Sales taxes, we get 1% of the sales tax that you pay at the cash register comes directly to the city. Another 1% of it is used for education, but is handled in a formula. B-pole is 4%. Licenses and permits, just 1%. Our state and federal funding, and most of that is state, actually, is 7% of our budget. And then fees, for instance, our wreck and parks programs are funded primarily by fees, and that's 7% of our budget. Here are some trends over the past year, since 2007. This line represents real estate revenue, and this line represents all of our other revenue, so B-pole taxes, sales taxes, meals taxes, that type of thing. And one of the challenges we've had in budgeting, and this is true across the country, is that with the recession, these revenues have been flat. And so we have needed to have a higher reliance on real estate revenue even as we've cut our budgets. And compounding this is that with commercial values being relatively flat over this period of time, the lion's share of this increase in reliance on real estate revenue, up to 60% of our budget now, is coming from the residential sector and single-family homes. And so that translates into the pressure on the median property tax bill. In 2002 to 2013, our taxes are done on a calendar year basis. The budget will require a $600 increase in the median single-family or homeowner's property tax bill. And of that, $262 would be due to assessment growth and 345 from the six-cent proposed increase in the tax rate. If you take this period of time from 2006 to 2013, it comes to about a 3.3% annualized growth in the median homeowner's tax bill over this period of time. Here are regional rates. In the budget that I propose at $1, or that's built around $1.33, we're right pretty much in the middle of the region. The smaller jurisdictions tend to have the higher tax rates in the region. The counties, with the exception of the City of Fairfax, tend to have the lower tax rates in the region. Most of the budget proposals that are being deliberated by the county boards of supervisors or town councils or city councils have some form of a tax rate increase in them, from eight cents proposed in the City of Fairfax to a .5 cent decrease proposed in Loudoun County. But Arlington and Fairfax County are proposing tax rate increases as well. When we talk about tax rates, one thing we always need to do is put a big asterisk by this because there's always a story behind everybody's tax rate. In Fairfax County, for instance, they have a separate charge for leaf pickup. They don't include trash pickup. Lots of cats and dogs, there's a McLean Community Center that's not included in this rate. So you tack on about 12 cents to get a true comparison for the Fairfax County rate. But to build a chart with all those nuances in it becomes a very complex thing. So we just try to keep it straight. This is the revenue summary. The bottom line is that we're budgeting on a basis of 8.2% growth in revenues. The economy, without any tax rate increase, is producing about a 4.1% increase in revenues in our projections for next year. The important one is here in the real estate sector, where we're budgeting a $3.4 million increase in funds, and that includes the proposed six-cent increase in the tax rate. All of our other revenues, personal property has seen healthy growth, and that's a regional or national phenomenon as people are finally going out and buying new cars. That's principally what's going on there. And our meals tax revenue has been a high performer for years in a row, and sales tax also has been good with the BJ's coming online and things like that. But we do see, in our most recent two financial reports, that both meals tax and sales tax have begun to crest downward for the first time, really, since 2011. We'll see where those trends go, but we, you know, there's pressure with the repeal of the payroll taxes and the sequester, we think, are driving that. But we'll track it month to month. So in terms of your local taxes, where does that money go? When you buy something at the cash register and pay that sales tax, and the 1% comes to the city, or your personal property tax, or your real estate tax rate, you see the dollar starts to get a little fuzzy here. But at any rate, in terms of the breakdown of it, 51 cents of that dollar will go to schools, 14 cents goes to public safety, 6 cents of that dollar goes to public works. That's not including stormwater because we're moving that to an enterprise fund in this budget. Health and welfare, 4 cents. Parks and libraries, 4 cents of that dollar. Planning and economic development, 2 cents of that dollar. And then pay-go, capital reserves, and debt service is 9 cents on that tax dollar. And then 10 cents is going for administration. IT, HR, Commissioner of Revenue, Treasurer, City Managers Budget, those types of things. This is a big breakdown of our expenditures. This is where the money goes. General government is growing by 3.9% in this budget, $1.2 million increase. Our school transfer is going up by $3.8 million, a 12.9% increase. We do have a decrease in our funding for fund balance restoration because we've gotten back to, very close to our policy targets, and so we're taking that money out of the budget and now putting it over to operations. In terms of the general government operating budget, a couple of big challenges that we have, I mentioned just a moment ago, $1.2 million of additional expenditures proposed in FY14. The lion's share of that goes to increases in our inter-jurisdictional contracts, that's jails, and that's fire principally, where those increases are. The other chunk is mandatory expenditure to fund our pensions principally, to tell it, what the actuaries tell us we need to put into the pension fund in order to meet obligations over time. So that leaves $421,000 to meet everything else, and that's under a 2% growth in terms of everything else in the budget, the rate of growth that is allowed for in this budget. Positions over time, these are our general fund positions that fund, you know, libraries, police, all of our general government operations. We averaged just over 200 positions in the period prior to 2010, and then with recession, we stepped down by about 14% in this period. This budget has a proposed net increase of 1 FTE. There's some reductions of positions in some parts of the budget, some increases in others for a net increase of one position. I want to go through just a few slides with some summaries of things that are in this budget. And there's a lot of text, and this will be posted up on the webpage, but we just want to try to get this information out of what is in, what do we do with the budget that's requested? In the area of the environment, we pick up over 5,000 tons of garbage and 2,000 tons of recyclables. We have the highest recycling rate in Virginia, or maybe the second highest now, yeah. But we're proud of that. We're able to pave two lane miles per year out of the 72 lane miles that we have in the city. We take 250 tons of debris out of our storm drains. We collect 1,000 tons of leaves and mulch them, manage all of our streetlights and traffic signals, maintain 22 facilities in the city, and maintain 78 vehicles. Other things that we're able to do in terms of planning for the future, we participate very actively in our regional and local transportation planning. We're trying to update our comprehensive plan. We're doing area plans for economic development areas and trying to produce one updated area plan every six months. We process about 1,600 building permits per year, enforce the property maintenance code. We try to process the major special exception projects that go through our process. We market and recruit for businesses in the city, try to grow our tax base. In the area of public safety, we're able with this budget to provide 24-hour, seven-day-a-week police patrol and response. We have a 24-hour day 911 call center that averages 60,000 calls per year, 26,000 of which result in a dispatched police officer with an average response time of three to four minutes. We conduct 250 criminal investigations. With this budget, we have one school resource officer and one community resource officer to try to work on crime prevention, and we have emergency management and storm and weather response. We have fire services. Arlington County Fire responds 5,400 times a year for either EMS or fire response in the City of Falls Church. The volunteers participate in 2,000 of those. We pay for fire marshal services with inspections and fire investigations. We provide for courtroom services, and we provide for adult and juvenile detention. On any average day, we have 13 adults that are in the Arlington County jail, and that's in this budget. In our library, we have one of the busiest libraries on a per capita basis in the state of Virginia. 146,000 items in our collections, books, DVDs, electronics, magazines, and circulated 307,000 times. So if you take that collection, almost everything is processing through, obviously some of them more than others. We have 15,000 participants in programs at the library. Most amazingly, 1,200 teens participated in the summer reading program. We do have a reduction in our level of electronic and audiobooks funding in this budget as we're trying to balance with that under 2% growth in spending. In recreation and parks, we're able to maintain 12 parks in the city, including Cherry Hill Farmhouse, and 25 courts and ballfields. We are able to run nine major events through the city that bring about 50,000 people into the city in our athletic programs and our recreation and education programs. And then in human services, I process juvenile domestic relation court cases and administer 40 affordable dwelling units in the city. In general operations, in terms of the reductions in staffing levels that we spoke of just a moment ago, we have, most of those have come in the area of administration, where we've tried to run leaner and not actually cut services. These do have big impacts on our operations, but we have about 15% lower staffing in administration. In this budget, we do have an additional position in the Commissioner of Revenue's office to assist with revenue assessments, and we do ask for an IT position to help with her IT work. It's paid for within the IT budget with no significant net increase in cost. In the budget, we do have a compensation package that attempts to maintain competitiveness in the regional market. We fully fund the city pension and the actuary, the required contribution, and the budget has in it a 3% increase in compensation for city employees. There are a lot of unmet needs in this budget. I mentioned the cable TV program that we need to sort out with the schools in terms of where that will best be administered. But in terms of initiatives that will not be funded in this program, we do have unmet needs in IT and our radio systems for public safety and public works. We are losing with the sale of the water system, where we've run a lot of our environmental programs and sustainability and climate change initiatives with the Director of our Public Utilities leading that effort. We will lose that resource, and that's an unmet need in this budget. An additional school resource officer, we've had discussions about that, but in terms of funding that, we'll need to, we're not able to fund that in this year's budget. Lots of equipment needs and library reductions of books and materials and supplies. We'll be talking about these as we go through the budget process, both what's in the budget and also what some of the unmet needs are. Let me actually, before we go to schools, if we could run through the stormwater, and I will shift over quickly to Bill Hicks.
Good afternoon or morning, I guess, so far.
Before we formally start, we need to change the mics.
If I can figure this out?
Just put that in your pocket, and you're good to go.
Can everybody hear me? Perfect. Super. So in FY14, starting in July, we're proposing a stormwater utility. This has been much discussed over the last, really about three or four years, but really in the last year, we've had a lot of discussions with council at work sessions and public meetings. What we do in the city is we manage stormwater. We've got two watersheds. We're about two and a half square miles. We drain southward to Trips Run. Most of our city drains to Trips Run, and the northern part drains to Four Mile Run. In order to get the water from your homes and our parking lots and wherever in the city, we've got about 27 miles of storm sewer and 70 miles of curb and gutter. We have about a mile and a half of open stream and about 1,400 appurtenances. Those are manholes and catch basins and structures that tie all those pieces together. And all of that, we try and do the best to serve that we can. But that was developed over, mostly between the 1930s and the 1960s. And so here we are, 50 years after that. We're struggling with an aging system that may not have been built for the amount of water that's being pushed through it now. It's aging, so just like your cars and your homes, we have to do particular repairs. So that's essentially what we're talking about. We also manage three regulatory programs in the city. The first is our, during construction, we call this the Erosion and Sediment Control Program. So whenever a private developer comes in to do construction, we're trying to keep the sediment and any erosion and sediment from coming downstream and winding up in our storm sewers and our streams. This helps keep capacity and also improves water quality. The second program is we manage a water quality program. It's called the MS4 program. It's developed out of the Clean Water Act, and it is our municipal separate storm system, municipal stormwater.
Municipal separate storm sewer system.
There you go. Four S's. Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. And we're mandated through a state permit that comes down from the feds that tells us things that we have to do to improve water quality. And that permit, the regulatory requirements of that are growing in the coming years, and they're growing astronomically, and we'll talk about that in a minute. But that's going to cause us to spend more money in our system. In the last area, kind of regulatory areas, we have a floodplain program where we're trying to do things that are positive, that allow you guys to maintain flood insurance. So if you do get flooded from the big magnitude storms, that you have flood insurance to cover that. We do certain things that allow you to buy flood insurance in the city at a 15% discounted rate. So as we saw the new watershed requirements coming on, they'll be effective in the next year and a half, and we saw our pipes aging and the interest in our storm sewer system. We started a program about two years ago, or in 2009, so several years ago, three or four years ago, to develop a watershed management plan. And we worked with a 15-person advisory committee to look at particular projects of interest, to look at the regulations, to look at our current policies, to look at our aging infrastructure, and come up with kind of a comprehensive plan. We did that, and we presented that to city council, and city council adopted that in February of 2012. And recognizing that to increase this level of service to meet these needs, that we're going to have to spend more money in stormwater, city council almost immediately went out and passed a resolution that said, "Let's look at trying to figure out an enterprise fund and a dedicated funding stream to address these stormwater issues." And so we've been working with council and the city manager's office to try and develop what an enterprise fund might look like, and that's resulted in what's in the FY14 budget. In general, we have three areas of needs. The first is operations, to be able to keep our pipes clean and in good repair. We have, we developed sinkholes, just as a matter of course, happens in every jurisdiction across the country. Our pipes separate, our pipes break, you develop sinkholes, those have to be repaired. You get sediment into our storm sewers, that sediment gets in there, clogs things up, we need to clean that out. Those are operational things. And then we need to have more capital for our conveyance network. This is a reinvestment, rehabilitation of our existing system. So we've got a system in place, it ages out, we need to replace it. So we need some capital monies for that. And then lastly, we need capital monies to address these new stormwater regulations. We figure this is about $1 million a year for the next 15 years. And this is mandated by the federal government, so whether or not we like the environment or think it's the right thing to do, it's an obligation that we need to meet. So we get debris in our pipes. We don't want it there, but it comes there. This is a stream, and in Falls Church, you can see the bank is cut down. That sediment moves downstream. A lot of times, it winds up in our pipes. This is a Falls Church pipe taken probably about six years ago, 2008. We obviously had crews in here, the bucket and the pitchforks and these things were not carried downstream, but we had crews in here to clean this out because if this is the whole pipe, I don't know if you can see this well, but right about the spring line or about right halfway up the pipe, that's filled with sediment. And that sediment doesn't get resuspended as the floodwaters come down. It sets in like concrete, and it really just takes up space and does not allow your stormwater to move down as freely as it would otherwise, and you end up with flooding back upstream. As I mentioned, our system was built between the 1930s and the 1960s, and it simply ages out, just like your cars or your houses. And we have damages in our pipes. We probably have 1,000 pictures like this, but these are four I'll show you that are representative. In the top-left corner, you see an acute break in the pipe. This may be that somebody has put another pipe in and broken our pipe, but for whatever reason, there's a break in our pipe. Bottom-left, you can see this is corrugated metal pipe that has started to fail, and it started to buckle, so it's starting to collapse. You can see root intrusion here. So the pipe's not as big, water doesn't get through as fast, and things start to catch on these roots and this little blockage, and exponentially, you get less and less water going through there. These two are corrugated metal pipes. We figure about 30% of our pipe network is made out of corrugated metal pipe, and that ages out in about 30 years. Sometimes you get more years than that, but 30% of our pipe kind of needs to be replaced very quickly. These two pipes here are concrete pipes. This is a kind of a longitudinal crack that runs right down the end of the pipe. That pipe hasn't yet failed, but you can see it's cracked, and one day, it won't carry water anymore because it'll start to collapse. You'll also get soil and dirt kind of coming in from up top, and you'll develop sinkholes at the top. This is also a concrete pipe that has separated. You know, you build these pipes, they sit together, they nest together, and this could be that the pipe wasn't built well in the first place, but it could also be that, like we are starting to see, that earthquake that we had a year or so ago, when that shook, started shaking these pipes apart a little bit. And so we do see problems like this now just resulting from that. All of these things can result in flooding upstream. This is Broad Street. This is this kind of a regular area. We know what's going on. We have an active project to get this fixed. We'd like to think we'll be in construction late summer or early fall to get this fixed. But these are complicated projects that result from the very things we've just looked And what we'd like to propose in our FY14 stormwater utility is we get out there after these three needs. This is one piece of equipment that was bought last year, and it goes out, and we clean out that sediment that's in our pipe. We regularly go out there and do that. The problem we have right now is that to get this piece of equipment out in the field and do work, we have to borrow crews that normally do streets and roadway work. And so we don't have a dedicated crew that can run this all the time and go out and make those point repairs. We have to borrow them, and that's work that they're not doing in other areas of our city. So with this new budget that's proposed, we would have a dedicated crew to get out there and do this work on a regular, everyday basis. We'd also have that crew, as well as some engineering monies, to go out and make permanent repairs. This is a break that was on Lawton this last year. This break, this is our crews. We went in, we stopped work for about a week and a half for everything else they were doing in the city. We had to put two crews on it. We only have two crews, and they worked to fix this. That fix is a temporary fix, it's not a permanent fix. So what we want is to have a dedicated crew that can make those temporary fixes, then we can go out and engineer the permanent fixes and get up and quickly after the temporary fixes go in and make a permanent fix. This here, these are sinkholes here. This is a very large line that's coming down North Washington, right in front of the North Gate Project. This came up, that pipe separation, came up about a year ago, and all of a sudden, we knew we had a big problem. We didn't begin to have the capacity to address that at the time, but we were able to negotiate with the North Gate Project, and that is now part of what they're doing, and they're going to fix that pipe for us as they move ahead. So that is, let's call it 250, maybe 300 feet. Remember, we have 27 miles of storm sewer in the city, so we're doing everything we can to leverage So we're doing everything we can to leverage our capacity to meet these needs now, but the needs are very big. And so that's what's in the FY14 to really get on top of this. And then lastly, it's our water quality compliance with that MS4 permit and the Clean Water Act. We've taken some strong looks. I've got our consultant here, David Bollevo with AMEC, as well as our stormwater engineer, Jason, at the back, and we've taken some really strong looks about what it's going to take to make, to meet our water quality needs. And we think it's about $1 million every year for the next 15 years to build what's called best management practices. And they're like little dispersed water treatment facilities. They're not nearly as complicated as the one in Arlington or Alexandria, but they're bioretention cells, rain gardens, even cisterns that take water and treat it before we discharge it back into our system. But it's about $1 million of those every single year. So as I said, there's a council resolution that helped us move to this place to say, "This is our proposal." So in that proposal, we're trying to meet these goals that we've just articulated. It's going to bring in about $1.8 million in revenue and that's what our budget will be. Now, we're going to debt fund all of our capital improvements, so that means that we're putting really $1 million into conveyance and $1 million into water quality. And to get this revenue, we're going to propose a stormwater fee. This would be separate from your taxes. It would be based on the impervious cover on your particular property. So those are driveways and sidewalks and rooftops where water doesn't seep into the ground, but immediately runs off. And we would say that the fee is $19.80 per every 200 square feet of that impervious cover. So what is your fee, you know, you would have to take on your particular property. You reach out and you say, "I've got so many square feet of driveway, so many feet of rooftop, so many feet of sidewalk." You add that up together, you divide it by 200 and you multiply it by 1980 and you come up with an answer. Well, on average, you've got about 2,755 square feet of impervious cover on a parcel here in the city. So you take that number, you multiply it by 1980 and you get somewhere around $270 per year. That fee would be attached to the real estate bill, so it'd come out twice a year, so that's $135, twice a year, that would be on your real estate bill. And then all of that would go into stormwater, it would pay for the things that we were talking about and that's where it would reside. It would no longer be in the general fund. And there's about one cent in the general fund right now that pays for stormwater. That would come out of the general fund and then it would be fully funded under the stormwater utility.
All right. Susan, we do have a school presentation and then I think maybe if we could just, we could hear from Chairman Carney and then go from there and we'll have questions for the second half.
Thanks. That's the other system, so I need to keep it somewhat close to you. Oh, sorry. I just didn't want to spill my water on it, which I'm likely to do, as you know. All right. Good morning. While I get mic'd up, I'll say good morning to you. I should have worn my boy clothes today, it'd have pockets for these things, but I didn't. Can you hear me? Is it on? Okay, great. Before I start this morning, I'm Susan Carney, I'm a member of the school board, I'm the chairman of the school board. I've been on the school board, this is my seventh year, my second term, this is my seventh budget cycle. And they're always lively, to say the least. I want to recognize some folks here just because they do great service to our community and our kids and maybe weren't here in the room before. And those are my colleagues in the school journey that we are on. Dr. Jones, who's our superintendent, Wyatt mentioned before. We also have our CFO, Hunter Kimball, who's lurking in the back with Ira Kalin and Phil Duncan. Charlotte Highland is the vice chairman of our school board and she's in the back along with Kiran Sharp. Kiran is, I think, the longest-serving member of the school board ever in the City of Falls Church and he served our city on city council before that. So he is, he's been an involved citizen for many, many years. And Justin Castillo, who also is in the back, is one of our newest members of the school board. And we've been working on this budget since January. So we are kind of deep into our process. The second thing I want to mention, because if I don't, I'll forget at the end, is there are two other forums for you to learn about the school budget recommendation this year in addition to the town councils, town halls that we have. First, on Monday evening at Mary Ellen Henderson at 7:30, the PTAs are being kind enough to sponsor a forum on the school budget. If you want to learn more and ask questions, or if there are people in your neighborhood that couldn't come this morning but would like to know more, they can come to that and we'd love to see them. On Wednesday evening, the 21st, the League of Women Voters is hosting a forum on the school budget that will be kind of from the perspective of our growing student enrollment and demographics and what that means for us and for our budget in the city. It's being held in city council chambers at 7:30. And once again, please come, we'd love to see you. And then, of course, we'll be here at the town halls, we'll have a work session with city council at some point. So you'll have lots and lots of chances to learn about this particular budget. This morning, what I want to do is answer four simple questions. What is the request? Simple. What are the key drivers? What are the priorities that you would see exhibited in this particular budget? And then what can you expect to see in the schools going forward? So let's just kind of jump in with the first question. This is the high-level view of the request for fiscal year 14. It's a total budget of almost $44 million. We have three individual budgets in the schools that we manage. We have the operating budget. This is the budget that actually educates kids. We have buses. Is that better?
The people over here have good feedback.
Great. No, good feedback, thank you. This is what buys textbooks, technology, pays for teachers, pays for buses and transportation is our operating budget. We have the community services budget. This budget houses a variety of things that are more focused on community activity rather than educating children. The TV station has traditionally been in that budget. The daycare money from our daycare program at the schools is in that budget. Revenues and expenses from rental of our facilities to third parties are in that budget, that kind of thing. And that budget is largely a break-even budget to us. We do build up a little bit of savings over time, which then goes to do things like buy the furniture required for TJ next year to outfit the new classrooms based on that addition. And then finally, there's the food service budget. This is also a pretty even budget, what we take in from school lunches that parents pay for and from federal funds for school lunches and other things gets paid out. So that's what we do, that's for feeding our kids. We spend most of our time talking here in the city about the operating budget because that's the budget that our community funds for the most part and that we work closely with city council on. This is the sources of revenue in that operating budget. You'll see the vast majority is from our tax dollars, the people who sit in this room. Because our community is wealthy according to many standards and has lots of funds, our federal monies are small and our state monies are small. In fact, we get the smallest proportion of state monies that the state gives to school divisions. We get less than Fairfax County, for example, and Arlington County as a proportion. You'll see that the city transfer request this year is going up by 14.3%. That's a lot. We realize that. When the superintendent showed us her recommendation, we went, "Wow, you're probably going wow." But we've spent about six weeks now diving into the data and understanding it and asking questions and looking at scenarios and so you'll see some of the data behind this as I go through the presentation this morning. This is what we spend the money on. As you can see, the vast majority of the money gets spent on instruction, what happens in the classroom, teachers, textbooks and all those kinds of things. We also spend 11% on facilities and then you can see the rest as we go around the dial. One of the things we're very proud of is that we invest more money by a lot in instruction in our schools than is required by the state. And each year, we try to increase that. So we're trying to squeeze our administrative costs down, 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 down and increase instruction costs. The state would want us to spend 65% of our money in our schools. So you can see we do, I mean in instruction, we do a lot more than that. And this year, the superintendent, through her magic, has reduced an already small administrative budget. You can see this lime green right here, this 4%, by 2% from 6% to 4%. That's a huge difference in the administrative budget. So we're running really lean on that side and we're just trying to put everything we can into instruction for kids. This funding level is just about equal, but not quite, to the per pupil spending for our school division back in 2007. We're going to show you a lot of data this morning and the baseline for most of that is fiscal year 2007, okay? We picked that baseline because it's a few years before the great downturn so that we can see the patterns, you know, over the last several years. Now, this is in real dollars. If we converted it to constant dollars, it's really more like $11,000 per student. So we're operating very thinly. We have found some cost savings in our budget, over $1 million of cost savings and they come from a number of places. You can see them here, staffing adjustments, retirement kinds of moves and shifts that we can do. One thing, or I guess two things I really want to point out are these partnerships we have with the community. As we all know, schools are a community operation. It requires all of us, whether we have kids in the schools, will have kids in the schools, had kids in the schools or never had kids in the school. Community is what operates our schools. And these two things I just want to shout out, the daycare partnership. These are the parents who have kids in the daycare program before and after school and they are providing the schools with $100,000 for playground equipment out of their budget and that saves us in our taxes and in our operating budget. And that's very generous of them, very, very generous of them. Just while I'm talking about those parents. Those parents also fund lower fees for children from low-income families to attend our daycare program before and after school. So they're really, if you see parents who have kids in daycare, thank them. And then second is our community fundraising partnerships. This is with our PTAs, our band boosters, our education foundation, all of the organizations that are a constellation around our school division who raise funds for programs in the schools. For example, the new lights on the baseball fields, they're not part of this 350,000, they're much, much more than that, were organized and coordinated and funded by the band boosters raising that money. So the education foundation helps us with technology, the PTAs help us with enrichment and grants to our teachers. I mean, it's never-ending, but it adds up to real money at the end, it saves tax dollars. There are unfunded needs in this budget and a lot of them. There are $350,000 of items the school board removed from the superintendent's request and I can tell you that was not easy because that was for things like literacy and structures, right? We want kids to be able to read, but we took those things out. It was for technology, it was for support staff, for a lot of very, very important things, but had to come out. You can see the list here of other things. We have in this budget a number of classroom teachers that we're adding because our class sizes have gotten unmanageable over the past few years, but we haven't added what I think of as our auxiliary team, right? Reading specialists, encore specialists who teach art and music and PE, those kinds of things. So we have lots and lots of needs. That's the bottom line. All right, so what's driving this increase in requirements for the schools? There are essentially two things that I'm going to talk to you about this morning. The first is student growth. If you look at this chart, once again, the baseline is 2007. We had about 1,900 little kiddos in our schools in 2007. This year, the chart shows you 2,272 children. That was as of September. I asked the superintendent this morning, we have 2,291 as of today. We keep adding them, they keep coming to the doors and we keep welcoming them. And we'll be adding more next year. You see the highlighted number there, 2,396, almost 2,400 kids. That's about 25% growth between 2007 and next year. I mean, that's dramatic. That's a lot of new children in our schools. And during that time, we haven't added a lot of new classrooms, a lot of new, you know, technology, a lot of new teachers, a lot, a lot. We haven't added a lot because we've been holding the line. So that's the first thing. And I'm going to come back to this later, but you notice it's not stopping out for the next several years. It's going to continue to grow. And I want to say, sometimes when we start talking about enrollment growth in the city, we kind of make it sound like we don't want those children. So I just want to stop and say, we love every one of them. We open our doors to them and to their families, we welcome them and we do our best to educate them, whether they are in kindergarten and will graduate from George Mason High School or whether they're here because they've been pulled from Egypt by the State Department for a short amount of time for their safety and security. We love all of them and it's our job morally and legally to educate them. And so we do. So the second driver of this particular budget is that our operating funding has not kept up with enrollment and there are a number of reasons for that. If you look at this chart, what you'll see, this kind of purply line that goes skyward is the percentage increase in enrollment over time. This pink line is the spending per student and the yellow line is the city dollars transferred to the schools per student. And so the big takeaway from this is, wow, look at that big jaws gap on the right-hand side. 25%, 26% more kids and funding just about the same. At the same time that we've seen the kids go up, that's this blue line, whoop, up here and the funding not go up as fast, city income has increased pretty dramatically. And while we all kind of in this timeframe hunkered down and schools revenue was flat and city revenue was flat, city revenue is recovering nicely. We're just not seeing the same proportion go to the schools. And this area underneath these two, this gap is really based on what would have gone to the schools had we maintained the traditional percentage of city revenue that came to the schools over time, which was about 46%. So the point here is, a lot of kids not increased funding. And you can see that in this chart. We used to be about 46%, sometimes a little bit more, now we're down in the 40s. And each percent, it doesn't seem like a lot from that picture, but each percent given the city's budget is about $700,000. $700,000 buys a lot of gas for buses, buys a lot of teachers, buys a lot of textbooks, buys a lot of, you know, a lot of things for our schools. So if there's one thing I wanted you to take away from this presentation, it would be this chart, which I think kind of states all this very similarly, I mean simply. What's driving the increase, the request this year, is a 20% increase in students, soon to be 25 since 2007, with only a 10% increase in funding, while city revenue has gone up by 25%. So we're just kind of trying to recover some of the funding that we used to have for our schools. All right. So what are the priorities? For those of you who joined in the budget talk with us last year, we have really five things that we focus on as a school board and as school leaders and as teachers in our schools that we think are the secret sauce for Falls Church. This is the recipe that's gotten us to where we are today and that we think will sustain our excellence into the future and you see them here. Small schools, small classes, modern teaching and learning, readiness to learn and outstanding staff. This particular budget this year focuses on small schools and classes, staff and readiness to learn. And let me just give you a little bit of an overview of what that means. All right, small schools. Well, first, why is this important? I sometimes think that those of us who are in the school business understand why it's important, but others don't necessarily. So just quickly, small schools are important because children don't fall through the cracks. That's the summary. Every child is known, their family is known, it's easy to understand their needs academically, socially, emotionally, what's going on in the home that might affect their school performance. It's easy for the teachers to collaboratively work with each student in a community kind of setting. And research shows it's more effective. There are also practical things about small schools like adequate play space for kids. Lunch schedules that kids aren't eating breakfast, I mean eating lunch at 10 o'clock in the morning, you know, practical. It's easy for the teachers to collaboratively work with each student in a community kind of setting. And research shows it's more effective. There are also practical things about small schools, like adequate place space for kids. Lunch schedules that kids aren't eating breakfast, I mean, eating lunch at 10 o'clock in the morning. You know, practical things as well. This particular budget funds a number of things that are going on to try to balance the number of children in our schools. Our schools are never going to be small in Falls Church the way they were when my kids went to school because we just don't have much land to build new schools and we have lots of kids. But we are trying to balance to keep each school as small as it can be. So we're, next year, we're moving the 5th grade back to TJ. If you haven't been over there to see the addition, drive by, it's awesome. It's really fun. And the kids are loving it. The kids have a website where they're tracking the construction. You can go on the website and see what's going on, it's really cool. We're moving the 8th grade back to middle school where 8th graders should be rather than being in the high school. And then the pre-K, we're moving from Mount Daniel to TJ. They'll be in the trailers temporarily while we work on building the pre-K center over on Cherry where they'll be permanently housed. So we've got lots of kids that we're moving. And this budget includes all the stuff that needs to happen to move them, right? That staff and its equipment and its furniture and its books and it's all kinds of things to make those transitions. Small classes. The bottom line, small classes are important because if the classes are too big, kids don't get individual attention from their teachers. And as we know, those who've had kids, kids are different each and every one. They have different strengths and weaknesses. And they need to learn in their own way and at their own pace. And as classes get bigger, kids can't get the individual attention to be able to learn in that fashion. Once again, research shows small classes work for kids to be educated. And that's our experience here as well. One of the things, the bottom point here, which is not well-known in the community, is that schools get built with classrooms of certain sizes to accommodate certain numbers of kids. And this is by preference of the local community as well as by law and best practice. And our schools are built for far smarter classes than we have. So we have classrooms that are just way overcrowded. So this budget funds a staff to reduce class sizes for core classes, only core classes, not drama, not art, not music, not PE, not all the other things, but for our core academic classes, to reduce them to a maximum of 24 students, which is the maximum we, by policy, allow here in Falls Church, at least in September. And I say at least in September because what we've seen over the last few years is that kids show up in September and they also show up in October, November, December, January, February, March, April, and May. So by the end of the year, we have more kids than we started with. Just so you'll know, when I joined the school board seven years ago, our policy in maximum class size was 22. We were aiming for 20 to 22 kids. We've increased that to 22 to 24 uneasily. And we're now on the verge of 25, 26, 27. So this budget has staff in it. And just for your information, the superintendent can provide data and we will to the community as we go through the process. Our class sizes are now larger than any other jurisdiction that we compare ourselves to. So we're kind of, if that's one of our pillars, we need to fix it. Outstanding staff are important because they have the talent and skills to work with kids. They can differentiate for each one. They provide innovative, creative learning rather than rote kinds of learning. And once again, research shows they inspire and motivate kids to perform. And we have lots of examples of that kind of teacher in Falls Church. And we need to not only keep them, but we need to add more for these kids. So this budget funds a step increase for all staff. That's about a 3% increase, a little bit more or less depending on where you sit in our charts. It also funds a 1% VRS increase. And that's required by law. The general assembly changed the retirement system for school staff a year ago. They had not been contributing to their retirement. They're now required to contribute 5%. And each jurisdiction could figure out how to do that. What we decided here to do was each year, we will give them a 1% increase in salary, which they will turn around and contribute to VRS. So it doesn't really look like more money in their paycheck. It's just part of a required change in the law. Dr. Jones has provided some information for you about how our teachers are compensated compared to their colleagues. We look at Arlington County as the gold standard in terms of teacher compensation. And so those are the data that we present to you today. And you can see that depending on your education, bachelor's, master's, master's plus 30, and how many years you've been teaching, you know, you're behind Arlington by more or less. But every level and every step in our compensation chart, teachers get paid less here than they get paid in Arlington County. And as you can see, it's significant in some cases. And in particular, as teachers get more experienced and have more education. In Falls Church, most of our teachers are master's levels teachers. That's what we hire because they're better for teaching. So this change in compensation is a first step to try to get us competitive with that. And then finally, readiness to learn. Why is this important? Readyness to learn is about helping kids who come from disadvantaged families have the same ability to learn as kids that don't. And we started this program a number of years ago, we're very proud of it. It's a small program, it doesn't cost us very much money, but we feel great about it. And that is providing meals for kids that don't have food at home, who are hungry when they get to us. And providing books for kids who don't get read to at home and who can't read at home. And research shows over and over again that if kids are hungry, they can't learn. And if you don't have books at home, if you don't get read to, you're not going to be literate as you should be. So the school board provides funds so that every kid in the city can be full and concentrated in their learning and can read at home. This year, the change that we made was we increased the scale for free and reduced lunch. According to the federal government, a family with one child who makes more than $20,000 and some change a year doesn't qualify for a free reduced lunch program. If you can imagine living in the city of Falls Church, a family with one child for $20,000 a year, it's not much. So we have increased that. So now we will cover those costs for families up to $25,000 and change. We think that's important. We still think that's not much, but we're trying to even that out. Okay, and then finally, in this section, I just wanted to touch, because there's a lot in the press about how public schools are not effective. And I just wanted to quickly stop and say, we get great results. For every one of your tax dollars that you contribute to the schools, we think it's the best value you can get. We get better results than anybody else in Northern Virginia and the state of Virginia as well. And it's across all of these things. We have the highest graduation rate. In fact, last year, our graduation rate was 100%. Not 99 or 98. Every child graduated. Our SAT scores are the highest. We have the highest percentage of kids who pursue post-secondary education, 96-plus percent. And they're going to the best schools that you can name on a list. We have more national merit scholars, semifinalists and finalists proportionally than anybody in the state, maybe in the world, but we haven't looked at that. Our academic team routinely wins district and states, year after year after year. Our robotics team is enrichment competing this weekend. You saw in the paper last week, our Odyssey, the Mind Kids from TJ, competing at the state level. You know, I could go on and on and on and on and on, talking to you about our kids and the performance that they have as a result of their parents, obviously, but also our schools. And it holds true in arts and athletics as well, right? Our band receives superiors every time they compete. We are nominated for Cappies in drama every year. Our chorus is excellent. You know, Sports Illustrated named our athletic program the best in the state of Virginia for a division of any size just three years ago. Our teams win championships. I mean, so we're, what I'm trying to portray to you is we're doing good work. We're getting results for these children. All right, so what can we expect in the future? Well, more of the same. If you look at the chart going out to 2017, we're going to have more children and more children and more children. We have forecast out, you know, five, 10, 15, and 20 years. The farther you get out, the less certain the forecast becomes. But for these years, we're very confident. Our forecasts over the last number of years have been quite accurate. We work with the Weldon Cooper Center down at UVA. Our CFO, Hunter Kimball, creates a forecast and we match it against that to see how it looks. And we then work with the city staff so that we have insight into economic development and what that might bring us. So our forecasting is very, very accurate. We see more kids coming. So it's a good thing the TJ addition's happening. I'm not sure where we'd put them. And so the message is more kids plus unfunded needs, 3.7 million of them, plus VRS increases, which will no doubt be coming down, means big budget increases. This is what we need to be expecting for the next few years in the city is we need to fund the schools and it's going to be a little more expensive than it's been the last several years. And then I just wanted to kind of finish with a couple of things. First, the schools are really a community endeavor. It's really about all of us. It's not just about parents who have kids in the schools today. I don't have kids in the schools today, right? But I'm engaged. And as I go through the community, when I talk to people who either will have kids in the school or do have kids in the school or did have kids in the school, and I think that's most of us, they support the schools. And in fact, most people that I talked in the community who probably will never have kids in the school understand that the schools are important to our rich community life and to the economic base of the city. So it's for all of us, right? We're all in this together. And two things about our schools, because sometimes we've kind of talked, it seems like, about the schools like they're a problem. Oh, so many kids, so much money, so expensive. But the schools really are our distinctive competence here in Falls Church. Now, distinctive competence is a marketing term, I'm a marketer, right? It's a marketing term that means what's the one thing that you're especially good at that's valuable to your organization? That's valuable to their community? That brings people to you, that keeps them with you? That wants, makes them want to be a part of what you're doing? And in Falls Church, it's our schools. We were founded for that reason. We're a great experiment for that reason, right? I'm not sure of anybody placed out in the United States where they founded a municipality for schools, right? It's what we do well. And we need to pay attention to continuing to do well and to resourcing to do well. Because when you lose your view of your distinctive competence, things start to not go so well. And then finally, schools fuel our economic engine. I think anecdotally, if you talk to folks who just moved into the city, they'll tell you it's far more expensive to buy a home here because people want to move here for the schools. It's been the case since I lived here and bought a house 25 years ago. It's the case today. If you talk to real estate agents, they'll tell you the same thing. People are willing to pay extra for the schools. They want their families to be here and their kids to go to those schools. And whether you think that the difference is 5% or 10% or 15% or 20%, we're trying to quantify that. It's a lot of money in the city's coffers for that extra real estate, right? $70 million budget, supposing it was only 10%? That's $7 million less we don't have to invest in our community if our schools are just as good as anybody else's. So that's why it's important for us to pay attention. And, you know, besides, the kids deserve it, each and every one of them. So I'm going to finish and then turn it back to you, Wyatt.
And this is the part where we hear from you? I'll need a mic back.
Do you want this one?
No, that's just the...
That's the transmitter.
And we'll have to formally best to give him that one.
There's part A.
We'll pass it back and forth.
I can just use that mic if we need to, or I can yell. We need everyone who's speaking today to use a microphone. We understand that the room is small and you can hear, but this is for the television cameras. So when folks watch this taped later, we want to make sure that everyone's comments and answers are recorded. So we'll pass it around. We only have two hand mics, so please let us pass it around.
Thank you all for your attention, it was a lot of information. In terms of, I think it was outstanding presentations. And in terms of distinctive competence, one thing I would say in addition is that we do provide very, I think, big-city services here. An outstanding school system, outstanding general government services. But we're able to do it in a small-city setting where individuals have a great deal of influence on the final decisions. And that's what these town hall meetings are all about. So let me, we'll just raise your hand and we'll take the mic to you and take questions. Yes, sir.
Thank you, John Lamoney. The growth in the school system from 2007 to projected through September 2013 was 496 of the 94.
We'll share.
Okay. We'll just stick together. I'll do this and you can hold that. What's the number, Tony? From 1,900 to 2,396?
496.
496.
Increase projected through this coming September. You mentioned one factor, the State Department, students. Could you give us, I have, I guess, a two-part question. Could you give us some idea of what the increase in those State Department-generated students are, the percentage of the increase? And what hard information the school system has on what types of, where the growth is coming from in terms of types of housing, income? Whatever information that you have? And on what you are basing your projections for the, I forget how many years in the future?
Thank you, Mr. Lamoney. I'm going to make one comment and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Jones. So you may as well come stand right up here by me and by Wyatt. Is it still on?
Yes, it is.
I didn't, it doesn't sound like it. In terms of... Oh, that's what we did. Oh, okay, is this better? In terms of the people who come just from the State Department, it's not a large percentage of our growth. It's a small percentage and it's sporadic. They come and go and come and go and come and go. Now, I'm going to ask Dr. Jones if you want to provide any more depth to that. Is this on?
None of them sound like they're on.
Hello?
Okay, okay. Well, first of all, let me answer the projection question. We started last year by having Weldon Cooper actually run our projections. And we did that intentionally so that there was an outside model professional doing our projections for us based on a birth rate model. So they actually go and look at how many, you know, children were born in this area and in Virginia. They look at the economics of the city. And so that's how we're actually projecting. We do have Mr. Kimball's projection model that we use side by side. But we did that intentionally because we didn't want people to question that, oh, well, maybe the schools are not quite sure, you know, that's not their expertise area for projection, they run schools. So we use Weldon Cooper numbers and that's how we're going all the way out. And we first actually contracted, the first time we did it, we went backwards to see if what they had out there publicly was actually accurate the previous five years before we contracted them to go forward. Because we wanted to make sure that their models actually worked for our city. And so we feel very good about our projections. I could talk about the housing and the enrollment growth for a really long time and I will not. What I would say is that the best thing is if you can come to the forum on Monday or Wednesday, we're going to have more of a deeper focus and you'll see a lot of data. We talked about it at our joint session with city council just the other night. We have a breakdown, we're working incredibly hard. Myself, Mr. Kimball, and then we have Leela Levek, who actually is our data person in the office. We are pulling numbers every day, trying to get a really, a deep understanding of where our children and our growth are coming from. And it's like I told city council, and the school board already knew this, they're coming from everywhere. It's single-family homes, it's apartments, it's condos, it's collectively. Every building in the city that can house a family is growing. And so we have that data actually broken down by how many single-family homes, what the condo rate is, and also what apartment rates are. So we're really working hard on all of that data.
Do you have any idea of the... Do you have any idea of the cost of the homes or the incomes of the people who are moving in?
Well, and that's not my expertise area. All I can go on is what the median income is and what is put out there for us. What I can tell you is what we're trying to do right now is dig even deeper and we're hoping to look at that economic value a little closer. So we're, luckily, Mr. Kimball's been here his whole life and so he's an expert on every street and block. So we're doing things like looking at places like Welcome Drive where one side of the street is Fairfax, the other side is Falls Church City. All of those houses are pretty much built by the same builder. You drive down the street, you wouldn't know one is Fairfax and one's Falls Church City. Is there a difference in the assessed value? Is there a difference in the value of the home? Because they all have access to our city. And they all have access to our services as far as attending our great cultural events and things of that nature. So we are working very hard on getting deeper in the data on that right now.
And I'll just add, one relevance to the question also is in terms of economic development. And the city council has as a high priority economic development in the city to try to grow the tax base. We do have some all-commercial development, like the hotel that's under construction, which will generate about $600,000 a year in revenue. But the development community is interested in residential in the city. And so whenever an application comes in with a residential component, a key criteria is, you know, legally under the SE ordinance, but also what we push for is for it to have a very strong and compelling commercial component to it. But the residential aspects of it, we tried to analyze very carefully. With the data that the schools have produced recently, since 2002, there's been an increase in enrollment of about 480 students.
Size of TJ.
That's right.
Kind of helps give it...
And of that 480 new students coming to the city, about 25% of that has come from the mixed-use projects that have been approved to date. You know, the Byron, the Spectrum, Pearson Square, et cetera. And so with that 25% of that share of enrollment growth, that economic development has also come with about $5.2 million of additional revenue. But this is the analysis that we are doing, and will continue to do, as we make these important land use decisions. Yes, ma'am?
Are there State Department funds that are given to the children that are attending the schools on a temporary in-and-out basis?
The answer to that question is no, but...
No. It's not that we haven't asked.
Yeah. Answer's no. Yes, ma'am?
People speak louder.
Okay.
I just first wanted to express support for the school budget and the schools. My question actually is just a quick pro-con on the pros of having a separate utility for the stormwater, and I assume there's some, you know, extra administrative fees with that, although maybe they're not that large, compared to just, you know, it seems like a pretty basic part of our city, and just why, you know, why it's separate.
There are a couple of reasons, and I'll call Bill up to speak to it as well. But across the state, or across the country, what you see is municipalities have traditionally underfunded this infrastructure. It's underground, it's invisible, it becomes a problem when you have a big rain event. And so if you're going to really address it, like water, or like sewer, there's a good rationale to have a dedicated source of funding, so that you can take care of it. It's also capital-intensive. So if you're going to actually make any progress, you need to do long-term planning, and you need to have a dedicated source of revenue as part of that financial plan to address it. And I think a third reason is that it will be accountable for it. If we carve it out, it can't disappear to other uses. We need to hold ourselves accountable that we're going to produce results in this area. And then lastly, I think an argument for it is that that fee structure has a basis of equity. If you're a major contributor to our stormwater problems, i.e. a big shopping center with a big parking lot, you will pay more. If you're a homeowner with a lawn, and with less impervious coverage, you will pay less. That's a basis for it. But, you know, that equity argument, or case, is going to need to be, we're going to need to listen carefully to what the public has to say about it, the Chamber of Commerce, and other stakeholders, before the council makes a final decision. Did I miss any other sort of key points?
I think you covered it very well. I would, I would, I would say that because it's capital-intensive, and the infrastructure's in the ground for a long time, having this separate enterprise fund allows that long-term time horizon for planning and investment into that system. I think that's the key driver. I mean, certainly transparency, and equity, and an ability to provide credits to those who pay for things that they do on their property. I mean, all of those things are part of it. But I think that the kind of long-term planning horizon is really the key driver.
And, but with a fee, if you put in a rain garden, or some sort of a thing like that, you might be able to get a break on the fee as well. Or we'll build it that way, so that there can be some ways to try to build in incentives that will, that will serve the overall system as well. Ed?
We don't have kids in the school anymore either, but we really support the schools. But I didn't have a question about the schools at all. The, is there, is there, are there some economic advantages that are factored in here, too, for the, for the stormwater investments? Some risk reductions, less public works investments, something about maybe insurance rates that might go down? Things along those lines because of that investment that have been factored in, or could be, to show the net benefits of this investment?
Well, the one thing, we do have a number of households that are in the floodplain, and they are required under federal law to buy flood insurance. Through our community rating system participations, it's a program with the EPA. We do participate in that, and because we score pretty well on it, we get a 10%, or is it now 15%?
15%.
A 15%.
Reduction.
We have a 15% reduction in the homeowners' flood insurance rates because of the amount of work that we do to try to mitigate flooding in the city. We can, we can try to do more. And so that'll be a growing benefit.
There's two other benefits to that, too, Matt. One is, we talked about, there's the federal mandates. So there are, let's just call them sticks and penalties associated with that, if we don't meet the required mandates. So that's one piece of it, as far as expenses to the city. And the other is, with the flooding that we're seeing in the residential, and in the commercial areas, there are economic losses that happen, dealing with property value, loss to business, which, you know, I don't know if we've got quantifications of that. But if you can't get through an area because it's flooded out, or homes are getting flooded out with us not being to fully manage the stormwater, that has real-life costs to our citizens, whether it's property losses, or diminished real estate values because of flooding that's reoccurring on people's homes, where we're supposed to be managing the floodplain.
Might be some big percentage.
Bill is up there. There seems to be a misconception out in the community that all the new development's causing more stormwater runoff. And I know that's not true, but could you address that?
Sure. Whenever a developer comes into town, they've got to, got to meet both water quality issues, as well as water quantity. And water quantity is what's asked about here. And that says that whatever the parcel looks like today, you've got a big parking lot, and you're going to put a building on it, you figure out what the runoff, what the amount of stormwater that would come off of that property before they built the new development, and then what it would look like afterwards, and then you mitigate the difference. So you hold that back on your property. So that, that is taken account for in the current ordinance. But as I've said, our system was built during the '30s and the '60s, and stormwater regulations didn't actually come about, the infancy of that didn't really come about till the '70s. So there are problems that we're, we're yet to fully address.
Hi, I'm Bob Lashaness. I apologize, I missed the city manager's presentation, but I did read it online, so as long as it's similar to that. I would, would note that in years past, there was a section comparing tax rates to regional, our regional competitors. It's very useful for our lawmakers to have that. Also, early in this process, I had contacted many of our city council members, attended a meeting to suggest that we should have something similar, that is, a regional comparison of contingency or contingency funds that other municipalities keep on hand. So that is conspicuously or suspiciously missing in all of the budget documentation here today, which suggests to me we're either embarrassed by the fact that our fund balance is three to five times larger than our surrounding jurisdictions, or we don't have a justification for that. If you look at the chart that is included regarding the fund balance, we've only drawn that balance down twice in the last 11 years. And even then, it was still above $2 million in reserves, which I would argue should be the maximum that we should ever keep in any given year. So that begs the question of when do we anticipate ever using our fund balance? If the fund balance is intended for unanticipated revenue shortfalls, or to provide a buffer for unexpected expenditure requirements, I think we should start asking our city council members, what is it that would be an unanticipated event? Would a federal sequestration, that many of myself and my fellow federal workers in the city will be facing this year, a potential 10% reduction in our income? Is the city sequestering money preemptively? They're collecting preemptive taxes, so they can deal with that potentiality? So we need to ask ourselves that. That is, there's additional FER fee in the budget as well, that what now we're creating even more fund balances in this new enterprise fund, okay? So when we talk about the 5% or 5-cent tax increase, that's really closer to a 10-cent tax increase. Now, this comes after years and year, well, at least two years of tax increases. So I hope that people start paying attention to the fact that we have these fund balances in our budget, and in these proposals that are three to five times. I'm going to, I've done the research, and my research suggests that our fund balance is three to five times larger than the surrounding jurisdictions. Nobody else has done that research, and has questioned that. So until somebody does, I'm going to continue to use this figure of three to five times, our fund balance being three to five times our neighboring jurisdictions. Thank you.
Richard, I think you want to address the fund balance.
Yeah, I'd be happy to call on our CFO, Richard Lacandre, to speak to it.
We'll stand back up and do the question. Just one of those things.
As I discussed on Thursday night, the fund balance that's being set up, is set up for a couple of reasons. Mr. Lashaness is right, it is for unexpected and unanticipated things. However, if you look around at other municipalities, and we have, they have reserves to replace some of their infrastructure. They have reserves that address automobile replacement. They have reserves to fund future school needs, okay? We do not. So our 17%, if you add it up, the assigned and unreserved fund balances from other jurisdictions, you will see that they are comparable to what we're doing here, okay? It's easy to look at the unreserved number and make an assumption. However, if you read the material, and I will bring it, so that council can see it, we are gathering that information right now, you'll see that we are not out of line.
Will that be public documents?
Certainly.
Do you mind passing that number?
And I'll say while the microphone is going to Tina. Tina gets the perfect attendance award for town hall meetings on the budget, I think, since 2007. Congratulations.
Thank you. Do I get to wear a crown like Kathy did when she was employee of the year?
Two quick questions. Will the utility fee change year by year, as we go forward? I assume so, but I don't know.
Yes or no? We'll work.
We anticipate having a fairly constant one for the next several years. That rate model is still being worked out. We're solid on FY14, we're still developing the out-years, but we anticipate it being very constant for a few years.
Thanks. And number two. Whole PowerPoint with the dollar bill, all divided up into pieces. The first piece says 51% goes to the schools, but that's not the same as the number that I hear Ms. Carney reference. Can you account for the difference there? I don't think it's the same number. And for the difference there? It was mystifying.
The, well, here, why don't you...
We anticipated this question coming up. Now, generally, in, in the budget presentation, we talk about all the revenue and all the expenses. When we took that dollar bill, that dollar bill represents the local tax contributions of Falls Church. So if you took our, our total revenue, and you backed out miscellaneous revenue, you backed out investment revenue, and more importantly, you backed out charges for services, which is program income, then that revenue number becomes smaller, and the expenses associated with those functions that don't generate any revenue, their percentage of that local revenue is higher.
Thank you.
Tina, I just wanted to follow up also, right? Question about the storm... No, no, no. I think, I think that's actually a great question about the Storm Enterprise Fund. And there is an aspect of political accountability. As Bill mentioned, that there is going to be a plan for how that's going to be expended over a number of years, similar to the water fund, and other enterprise funds that the city has. But the council, again, will be reviewing that every year, similar to storm, or, I'm sorry, similar to our sewer system rates, et cetera. So it will be managed, so there will be political accountability every year, just in the form of an enter...
I can only envision, once we start looking, we're going to go, ah, we thought it was in better shape than it was, now that we have the staff to do cameras and all that.
That'd be like an annual stormwater utility report, so we could look at like a list of projects started and finished, and what the net result and cost was. Because we had a utility committee a few years ago, and had a hard time ever meeting, and never really kind of got off the ground as far as being able to track what was happening. So I just was curious about that.
I'm not entirely sure about the characterization of the utility committee, but our utility funds do have, have a, have a separate budget, and a separate capital budget, and so it's very clear to say, this is what was accomplished in that utility fund. And, and so we would obtain that capacity on the stormwater side as well. Right now, stormwater, you know, we have managed to accomplish projects in the past. We had a, you know, Berry Street project, and we had a Kent Street project. But the way that stormwater is managed right now is it's kind of the last dollar, you know, goes to it. Because it is underground, it's kind of invisible, and it becomes a problem only when it, when it floods. And so it's basically, it's at a D or F rating right now because of that. And that's not unique. Falls Church is like most localities in that, in that respect. And what we're trying to do is bring it up to a level of service that we feel like we can actually hold ourselves accountable to, in the, in the B, B-plus range, where we'll meet federal regulations, and we'll actually be able to have a capital program to address, address long-term needs, mitigate flooding. Yeah?
Follow-up. So my calculations on the fund balance take into consideration the other funds and contingencies. But if the argument is that the general fund is too broad, and that we need to have these other fund balances, the transfer should come from the general fund into one of these new enterprise funds. We shouldn't be raising taxes to cut even more contingencies, and call, and label them differently.
Justin?
Yeah, Justin Castillo, I just wanted to follow up on the issue of stormwater, and what we're doing now versus what may come in the future, because obviously, we are downstream of many other places. I assume other jurisdictions have to mitigate their contribution, but how much water are we coping with that isn't generated by Falls Church itself?
Certainly, we have water that comes into our jurisdiction from Fairfax County, both in the Trips Run watershed, and the headwaters of Four Mile Run. Particularly in Trips Run, if you look just outside the city, around Shreve Avenue, there's a fairly expensive project that Fairfax County has undertaken, and we're really grateful for that, because quite honestly, there was a significant amount of erosion that came out of the banks of that channel, that found its way into Trips Run. And you remember that picture? That's, that's a lot of that. We see a lot of river stone in our storm sewer in Trips Run, that we're just digging out because it's come down from upstream. So now with that project, that, that should be dramatically, if not completely, reduced. All jurisdictions around us, Arlington, Alexandria, we're all, and Fairfax County, we're all subject to the new Chesapeake Bay regulations, and they're all undertaking these things. And when you look, we've tried to do some benchmarking of where our fee is, or where our current program is, and our projected program with theirs, we're using their old numbers. They're all going to go up in the coming years, because they're all going to have to address significant, significant obligations for water quality concerns. I've got David here. I don't, I don't know if I want to put you on the, well, I do want to put you on the spot, but maybe you could speak briefly. David is with AMAC, and he's our, he's, he's one of our consultants, and he works in the region with a number of the other jurisdictions, as well as at the state level, so...
Sure. I mean, in terms of the water quality aspect with the Chesapeake Bay, you all kind of are in a unique position, that you started your watershed planning process a couple years ago, when this was just starting to hit. Bill is absolutely correct. Everybody's going through the exact same process to figure how much this is going to cost, and it's going to cost a lot of money. Getting back to the enterprise fund, one of the double-edged swords of the way that the Chesapeake Bay program is set up, is that it ramps up slowly. And so for your next five years, you only have to do 5% of that work. Then 40% over the next five years after that, and then the whole remaining 60% of the next five years out of that. percent of the next five years out of that. And so it's a good thing, honestly, that you're having this conversation now, so that you can kind of spread that pain budgetarily over 15 years, rather than waiting a couple of years, and then having a lot of money that you're going to have to be spending in a short period of time. But, you know, getting back to your original question, we're all in the same boat. It's not going to be inexpensive, and the question, you know, for the City of Falls Church is, how do you want to raise the revenue in an equitable fashion, so that you can get those projects in the ground?
I guess my unspoken question is, are we building it big enough now for where we may be 20 or 30 years from now?
Sure. The question is whether we are building the program big enough now for where we want to be 20 or 30 years from now. And I think that's exactly the analysis that we were going through. You know, again, from the water quality standpoint, ensuring that we're collecting enough now so that we are leveling out how much we're going to have to raise every year, so that in the later years, we don't have a really big fee, we're going to have a relatively stable fee over time. With regard to the infrastructure needs, again, the capital improvements for your stormwater flooding, same thing. You know, we're in the situation right now that we're in, because we haven't made significant capital investments, you know, since the system was put in place in the '30s, '40s, '50s, and '60s. And so the way that the program is structured now is that each year, you're going to rehabilitate a piece of that system, and eventually, you're going to get caught up, and it'll be sustainable and more predictable in the long term.
We have looked at both water quality. We talked about that as a $15 million expense over 15 years that we've kind of mitigated out, instead of putting it all in that last five-year block. We're doing the same, we've also looked at our infrastructure in kind of a similar manner. We figure we've got about $80 million worth of infrastructure for rehabilitation and replacement in the ground. If we think that concrete pipe lasts between 50 and 100 years, we've got a lot of that corrugated metal we need to deal with now, but over time, we're going to, we're investing about $1 million into our system every year for that reinvestment rehabilitation replacement.
Yes, ma'am?
I have to leave. I'm a new resident in Falls Church, and I just want to say, I am impressed with the care and competence that you people have exhibited today. And I just want to say about the enterprise fund, China had 60,000 pigs thrown into the water stream. I don't want that to happen.
Thank you. Do we have pig grates as part of the? And welcome to Falls Church. I would just note, just to, David Boliva has brought a great deal of competence to our analysis of these stormwater issues. He's rare in a consultant, and he also serves as an elected representative in the Virginia General Assembly, and he brings a great statewide perspective to this and a nationwide perspective to this, and I think has helped us grapple with some very big and tough issues. So I want to thank him for that. Yes?
Hi, I'm Dennis Semansky, and this is for either Susan or Richard. A toss-up question. I hope the fuzzy dollar is not a metaphor, but when I look at, Wyatt talked about nine cents on a dollar for debt service. Susan's presentation only talked in terms of operational funds, so is any part of that debt service, can that be ascribed to the schools' budget?
Yeah, about 75 percent of the debt service is with the schools. And, you know, under accounting rules, all debt is held on the general government side, and that's the way that operates. And I will just note also that as we go forward, we've got, we didn't talk a lot about the CIP today. I think our capital planning is a major part of the budget, and we went through an hour and five minutes worth of slides. The CIP is worth another hour of slides, and there's very important items there, both on the general government side and on the school side. But in terms of this bigger discussion about the city's financial condition and fund balance and capital reserves, we have about $130 million of capital programs in our five-year CIP. Most notably, $100 million for school improvements at George Mason High School and Mary Ellen Henderson, that we're really wrestling with about how to build a reasonable financial plan to approach those. And we've got some tools in our tool belt, but right now, when you talk about our fund balance, or you talk about our capital reserves, they're wildly insufficient. And so, you know, it's a start. It's, I think it shows we have integrity towards trying to accomplish our long-term capital needs, but we've got a lot of work still to do.
So my follow-up question would be, is it appropriate, when I'm looking at the cost to deliver instruction per student, is it appropriate to include some portion of that debt service in the overall calculation?
Yes, so I'll comment about that. We talk most about the operating budget, because that is, from a horizontal perspective, from a longitudinal perspective, right? That way, we can look at comparisons and trends over years. Tony and Wyatt do work closely together on the capital side, and we're trying to tease out some data in that regard for the schools. But the capital is different. You certainly can attribute some of our CIP to the schools, and you ought to, but then we would also look at different historical funding levels for schools, right? We would go back historically and put the capital in all those years and see how that looked. Now, Wyatt's right about the CIP. We haven't talked about it very much. If we need to have a town hall to talk specifically about CIP, then we should, because it's a complicated issue for us. It is, reaches out into many years, and from the schools' perspective, you know, our stock of buildings is old. We have Maryland Henderson, which you know is new, because you were here when it was built. But our high school is 60 years old, Mount Daniel's 60 years old. TJ will be in great shape when we finish with it in time for school next year, because we're investing in that, and there's new cherry. But there's a lot of work to do to modernize our school facilities, and we've tried to kind of parse that out in the budget in a way that makes sense. But there is a big elephant in the room, and that is the high school. And we have to, there's a lot that work needs to be done there. It's very expensive work that needs to be done there, and as a community, we're going to have to decide how to approach it, when to approach it, and how to fund it. And that could be its own session, maybe not this year, but at some point. So, yeah.
Address your question a little bit more. From the council perspective, and the formal guidance that we presented to the city manager was a focus on the capital improvement program, and that's been a core aspect of the guidance that we've given the manager the last two years at least, on really focusing in on the capital improvements project. So from the council's perspective, while in this presentation, we really tried to focus in on the operating, the operating funds, we actually look at both, and look at debt service, and look at the long-term picture with a clear focus on capital improvement program, because we know that there's a lot that's coming on board. So, again, for the purposes of discussion, we've tried to sort of tailor this to focus in on the operating funds, but really, from a broad perspective, we're not divorcing the two. We realize that the two really go hand in hand, as we begin to look at some large capital projects on the city's side, as well as the school needs, which are both important.
This is more a follow-on of Mr. Largenes's question. So I heard Mr. Hicks say that our basement is leaking, and then I heard Mrs. Carney say our schools need funding. And I really, and I think a lot of people in the community need to know, why we're saving so much money at this point and not investing in what we have, the structures that we have, why we're saving for a rainy day with such a large reserve. And I know you can't answer that now, but in the next few weeks, as we go through this, I think that should be addressed by you and by council as well.
Well, you know, there's been a lot of discussion of this, and I think, just a couple of things to note. One, if you look nationwide, for cities 50,000 and population or less, their undesignated fund balance on average is higher than what the City of Falls Church's is. If you look at the city's history, we have traditionally had a higher fund balance than we have right now. As a practical matter, if we had not had undesignated fund balance in 2009, we would have needed to close down, period. And so it's not just an academic question. Now, going ahead in terms of financial planning, we have major capital needs going ahead. And if you're going to go out in the capital markets to get debt, and our CIP will require that, a baseline measure is, what's your undesignated fund balance? So they look at the double-A bond-rated cities out there in the country, and they all have 21 percent of their annual expenditures or more as undesignated fund balance, and worse significantly, less than that. It's just difficult to go into the capital markets if you're distinguished in that way. So we want to, we want to have a strong financial condition. It helps us in both practical ways, but also in terms of our financial planning is necessary. So it's a policy issue. It's not a big issue in terms of this year's budget, because we've done the lion's share of it. We had $2.3 million towards fund balance restoration in prior year's budgets. Now that's being re-designated towards pay-as-you-go CIP, or, as I noted in the slide, $900,000 of it is really going to schools. The general government budget, as the mayor noted, the council, their guidance is, let's have discipline on the operating budget, so we can do financial planning for capital infrastructure. Those needs are mandatory. We have to face them. And that's where the general government budget is built. We have less than 2 percent growth in all of our discretionary items in our operating budget, and we do have a CIP that is designed to meet needs. And so I think that's part of multi-year planning. We've taken years to get back to a point where we can do this effectively, and I think it hadn't been easy getting here, but I think people should be pleased with the fact that we have.
And that's really, I think it's important to acknowledge how we got here, and really, you know, in meeting our targets. One, the targets were not set out of vacuum without going to the markets, discussing it with the funding, with, I'm sorry, with the agencies that do our credit ratings, and speaking to them, talking with our outside consultants about what we, what type of shape we need to be in overall, where our targets need to be, understanding that we have significant capital needs that we have to meet. So it's not, the work is not being done in a vacuum. And really, to get us towards the policy limits that have been set, really came at a sacrifice, both to taxpayers, to staff cuts that happened to get us to this point. So I think it's something that the community should be pleased about, that we're in a good, solid financial position, that's going to really help us meet our capital program moving in the future. Now, that's not to say that there's not going to be budgetary pain, in the sense of, you know, how do you pay for some of the capital that we're talking about? But at least we are on solid footing to meet those. If you were to ask me that a few years ago, with where we were with our reserves, I would have said, there's no way we can have this discussion about the type of capital projects we're going to. We would have gotten decimated if we had gone to the markets and done that. That doesn't say we wouldn't have been able to, but we would have been paying a lot more. It would have been a lot more challenging to come up with solutions to meeting that. So I think the city should take some pride about where we're at. I know that people have different views about it, but I, again, I think looking at the markets, what's happened with our ratings, how they've held steady in the economic downturn, is really somewhat unique with jurisdictions our size, and I think we should take some community pride in that, and really focusing on how do we move forward, how do we meet the capital needs that the city has, including school needs and also the city needs.
Yeah, Mike. Right. And we'll go Ed, and then Nick, and then...
I'm Michael Carney, and I'm going to carefully disagree with Mrs. Carney here. I'd like to suggest, the elephant in the room is actually the lack of available funding for a $100 million high school due to our lack of economic development. And I'd like to know what, in this budget and upcoming budgets, we have in investment in economic development? The dollar graphic indicated something like 2 percent, I believe. Are we buying land? Are we partnering with developers? Are we doing anything in that sort of proactive manner to increase the amount of economic development and economic development income in our small town?
Excellent question. One thing that is not, has not been part of this budget discussion is the potential sale of the water system. We have billed our operating budget for 12 months of water utility operations. We have a referendum that'll go to the voters in November about the sale of the system. I would recommend to the voters approval of that referendum, but they will be, over the summer months, getting a lot more information out about that. But there are a couple of features associated with it. One, the sale price of the water utility at $40 million. We have about $30 million of liabilities associated with water utility, so there's about $10 million net that will be part of our long-term financial and capital planning. And we'll need to be very careful and very thoughtful about how best we deploy that. Also associated with the water sale agreement is a boundary adjustment that could potentially allow the city to pursue economic development opportunities that might help us meet some of our longer-term school capital needs, and capital needs across the board. I will note also, we have a proposal for the development of a Harris Teeter project in our downtown area.
I've heard of that.
And associated with that is the sale of the old Podolnick property that the city, with great foresight, bought back in the '90s. And return on investment on that has been tremendous. And so we have a sale agreement for that parcel for $4.2 million that also can be redeployed for land acquisition and for future economic development, to try to keep that momentum going. That project in of itself has a very strong and powerful net positive fiscal impact for the city as it goes through the process, and we'll be talking more about that. So that's just a summary of some of the tools in our tool belt to try to meet these longer-term needs. But we're going to need a lot of, you know, the best minds in the community to help us to continue to plan ahead and meet those needs. Ed?
On the water potential resolution, there's about a $10 million cash that we would, I guess there's 40 million coming this way, 30 million you're going, there's going to be utilized for other requirements, but there's $10 million left over, which I've already heard one city council member say they want to put towards something other than economic development. Has that been determined, or is that money going to go into another, under someone else's mattress, like some of this other stuff?
Well, what we'll want to do, speaking broadly, is to deploy it for the maximum economic benefit and fiscal impact for the city. And there are various options for us to do that, and it's probably premature to speak conclusively about that, but that would be the overarching goal. The water system has represented for the city financial sustainability. It's been very helpful to the city financially, because of the economies of scale that it provides us. And so the future, as we deploy the proceeds from the sale, it needs to meet that long-term need as well, to protect the city's long-term financial viability and the feasibility of what we're trying to accomplish here.
I was wondering if there was a timeframe or a process for addressing the issue of the $100 million in the school, and whether this is sort of something that's sort of a long-term thing we're thinking about, or whether we're going to, you know, not kick that can down and really address it and move forward on it. And I say that because interest rates are now so low, and they may not be in several years, that this may be a good year to really find, get a process in place to come to a decision on how we're going to do this, especially since there probably is a big economic return from making an investment in a new high school.
Well, one thing that I'll say is, we have, in years past, gotten a school request for, you know, a major project for George Mason High School, and we just haven't been able to fit it into the CIP at all and stay within policy. And Cindy Mester, Assistant City Manager, is our staff lead on the CIP, and has worked it through the Planning Commission, and now we'll have the council discussion with it. We do have it in the CIP. It is, if you just do it with debt, it would increase the debt service by about, you know, $8 million or so. And in terms of that as a share of the overall budget, it's a hard thing to manage. We do have these other tools that I mentioned just a moment ago, and so we need to do that planning work. It is, of course, contingent upon some things happening, such as the approval by the voters of the sale of the water system, but we'll continue that discussion.
I'm just going to add one thing. Ed, you're exactly right. Since I've been on the school board, I think we've had the high school on the CIP and the out-years every year, and it just keeps moving out and out and out. We do need to start doing a couple of things. One is having a conversation as a community about it, and we will, if we can get through the budget, then, and some other things happen, we'll start to have that conversation, I think, in a more serious fashion. Second, we did request some money in this year's CIP to begin the planning, because we're not ready to put a spade in the ground today. We really need to do a lot of planning in order to get ready, and we'd like to start doing that this year, if that would be approved by council in the CIP.
Yeah, Wyatt, you said the city went, just about to shut down when the reserves got down to like 2 million because of the losses in Fairfax County over water and all that stuff. Is that really true? I mean, doesn't the city have... I mean, doesn't the city have ultimately the ability to tax? Doesn't the city have land? Doesn't the city have the ability to borrow? These are, these are terrific resources beyond just what might be held in a bank account as a, as a so-called reserve. You know, when you're talking about 17% right now, by my calculation of about a $70 million budget, that's about $12 million. $12 million just sitting in the bank, earning very little interest in this environment. And, you know, yes, the reserves could be drawn down considerably, but, you know, number one, the likelihood of anything happening like happened a few years ago, I mean, I'd like to know where that could come from. Secondly, even if something like that did happen, it seems to me the city has got an awful lot of, I don't know, assets, capacities to tax, to borrow, to sell land, that would, that would make up for it. I just, you know, one more point is that in the '90s, late '90s, when the city first developed a fund balance policy, the range was 8% to 12%. I remember very well, because the, the argument was made that at 8%, that's about one month's worth of operating budget, you know, held in advance and kept for a rainy day or for whatever might go wrong. And, you know, how many, I mean, why isn't that adequate? And especially in light of the other things. And please comment on what the city's resources are, what we could have done had we had to do something drastic, you know, a few years ago.
Mr. Kalin?
Mayor, I've been trying to limit or not say anything, but that I have to respond to this issue of fund balance because this is my wheelhouse. And there's a big confusion between, and I won't go into the details, between a liquidity problem, how you pay your debts as they come up, and a solvency problem, which is, can you actually meet your long-term requirements? If you can't pay your mortgage for two years because the rates have spiked, it doesn't matter what your other assets are, if you can't get rid of them, you can't change them, you go out of business, you lose your house before you can make it up. So there's a big difference. Very strong banks go under because they can't meet their day-to-day expenses. God forbid, if BJ's was to burn down and we lose $600,000 in revenue in a year, or there's something that happens up in the other complex, we would be unable to pay our salaries, our debt service, and things if we didn't have enough money to be liquid because you can't sell your property fast enough to cover your liquid everyday expenses. That's part of the rationale for determining what the right amount of reserves that you need or liquidity that you need. Thank you.
Yeah, 17%, that, that policy target is two months of expenditures. And it is, you know, there are a couple of things you can look at. What is, what's normal for a municipality of our size? And if you look across the country, it's generally about 21% is, is, in fact, what, what they typically have. If you look in the city's history, where we are right now is not unusual. It was very unusual in 2010 when we drew it down, but we've, we've restored it. The, and as, as Mr. Kalin noted, you know, when you are in a, a crisis like that, you know, that's not, everything that the city owns has a purpose. And so in terms of selling assets, we went through a very long period just to consider the sale of the Pendleton House, but that took us about a year and a half to go through that process. There, there really ain't anything else to sell other than parks or schools or, you know.
Well, you have a taxing authority. You can sound out and raise money.
So, so you, you could do that, and you could also go to the markets for debt, but, you know, A, to go to the markets for debt for your operating budget is not a good thing to do, and it'd be a terribly expensive thing to do for, for the taxpayers if we, if we took that route. So it's, I, I think I understand the importance of the discussion, but I think part of the discussion about the fact is that we have had this policy discussion, but it, I think it's, it's useful to acknowledge the fact that really, we've essentially solved the problem. We've, we've gotten back to where we needed to be. This budget has not much investment in this issue now. We have a, a de minimis contribution to capital reserves because we have huge capital needs. And so that's, it's, it's, I think it's pretty practical. Now, in prior years, it was, it was hard. When you're laying off employees and raising taxes and dedicating, when one year, 1.3 million, and then the next year, 2.3 million towards fund balance restoration, those were hard decisions. But those were decisions made two years ago and one year ago. Now we're really reaping the dividend of that, and there really aren't too many hard decisions associated with it. Mr. Snyder?
Thank you very much. I'd like to, first of all, thank all the citizens that are here. Honestly, of all the town hall meetings, this one is really, really good, and you've made it good because of your questions that we'll be dealing with. I think as you look at the long-term history of this city, it's never been easy, but we've always prevailed, and I'm absolutely convinced that we'll do it this time. Now, in, there, there is a, a bit of background here that I might really, would be very helpful for citizens to understand, and it was mentioned very briefly in the school presentation. I think the assumption, particularly with people that move here, is that the state picks up a significant amount of education costs, or that your income taxes that you pay come back here in some significant way. I think it's, it doesn't make the pain any less, but at least you understand why the city, which provides almost all the services that people rely on, on a daily basis, keeps coming to you for more and more. Because frankly, particularly at the state level, the school funding formula is an absolute outrage in terms of making Falls Church taxpayers support the rest of the state. So it'll be interesting for folks to know that. Also, from the standpoint of the federal participation in our budget, very, very low. We also don't have a lot of indirect federal subsidies that a lot of jurisdictions in this area have. So while we do have relatively high incomes, the reality is that the taxes from those incomes go to Richmond and go to Washington and don't come back. So I think all of this is helpful just to underscore the fact that we're all in this together, and we're all struggling through these same issues, and at the end, we're going to come out, I, I think, maintain the strength of this community, the quality of our education. And at the same time, we are all mindful of the burdens on taxpayers, and we're going to work real hard in the course of this budget to minimize that as well. Thank you.
So Mr. Benton is correct. The city would never have to shut down because it has an unencumbered revenue stream in the form of ability of, the ability to tax. We all know that when revenue falls, our, we see our mill levies go up and, and adjust accordingly. The city can also go and establish a line of credit with the local bank or the credit markets if it needed to. Secondly, the figures that the city manager cites, in my interpretation, include undesignated expenses in the budget that does, that does not mean that they're not spent at the end of the year. That figure also includes school boards. So you can ask anybody here on the school board if they think that municipalities, on average, in 2007 and '08, were saving 20% of their revenue. And I, I bet you that they would be surprised at that. So this is why I requested that we see some of the data, particularly data related to our local jurisdictions, because our local jurisdictions also have fantastic credit ratings, and they're obtaining those credit ratings with a lower fund balance. So this is why this data needs to be in these public documents so that everybody can see how we compare to our local jurisdictions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaJenessa. And we are past noon, and so I want to take the opportunity now to, to thank you all again for coming. And now it's, it's Saturday, and we can go off and we can be free, for those of us who don't have to work today. Thank you all for coming, and we've got another town hall meeting planned on April...
13.
April 13th, and we will try to talk more about the capital program, but the other, the purpose of that second town hall meeting is also to update the community in terms of, of changes to this budget that I presented today as we've gone through the council's budget deliberations. So thank you for coming. Enjoy the day. Have a good day.